I'm recording us now on Zoom and YouTube is going. All right. Okay, we're now connected on YouTube as well. All right, so apologies everyone for the late start and we had a committee. Most of the board members are that ran over a few minutes. All right, so we'll go ahead and call to order. The regular meeting of the Region Nine Board of Education on April 27th, 7:38 PM. According to executive order, Mike, what's my executive order?
Seven B.
Seven B, thank you. Executive Order seven B via video conferencing on Zoom. We're recording on the Zoom cloud and also streaming live on the ER9 YouTube channel. And for the record, it looks like I think I've got. I'm gonna move my tiles around to make sure I've got all the board members over. We just do quick roll call because I can't see everybody. Cheryl, I see is here, Mike, Juliette. Juliette, make it over. See her, Gwen. See Karen, I see Karen, Mary Lee. See Mary Lee as well, and Maureen, I see Maureen. Todd is here, so we do have Quorum, we're missing Juliette. When? And Mary Lee from the previous meeting, so. All right, we'll keep an eye out for them, we do have Quorum, so we can go ahead and keep moving. All right, so let's move to the second item on the agenda, which is the approval of minutes. And we've got four sets of minutes to approve. So I'll be happy to take them as a block or we can do them individually, but the block would be better to move through things. We've got the minutes from the March 11, 2021 Region Nine Board of Education Regular Meeting. The March 16, 2021 Region Nine Board of Education Regular Meeting. April 8, 2021 Region Nine Board of Education Special Meeting. April 19, 2021 Region Nine Board of Education Special Meeting. So I'm happy to entertain a motion from a board member to approve all as a block. Or if we want to handle them individually, we can do that as well.
So, oh, sorry, Mike.
Go ahead, so move this fine, I'm just trying to move it along. I'll second it then.
All right, so the motion by Cheryl, seconded by Mike to move the approval of all four of the minutes. All right, any further discussion, changes, modifications? Already read through all those and good, thank you for all the detailed minutes by all the recording secretaries involved.
Yes, thank you to Juliette because it's been an extremely detail oriented and challenging year with these numerous meetings and she really does a good job.
Yep, yes, thank you Juliette, Sarah, and everyone involved in all those. Sharon, all right, see no other than all in favor of approving the minutes as is for those four. By eye for the board members, raise your hand. All right, it looks good, passes unanimously.
And Todd, all eight of us are on now, so.
Oh great, thank you, okay, so everyone's on for the record. All right, then let's move on to item number three, student comment, and I see Max. So Max, go ahead and unmute yourself and floor is yours.
Hello, so we have a lot on the noteworthy news today. So we first wanted to wish many congratulations to everyone for their work on the winner play Rose, which was written directed by Senior Riley Fresh. Barlow was awarded the People's Choice Award, which is given to the school voted best by all schools participating in the Connecticut Drama Association Festival. Additionally, we also earned the following awards. We had Strength of School and Character Development. All Connecticut cast, we had Ethan Horbury and Hope Madden. All Connecticut technician, we had Tess Graziano and Claire McCaffrey. We also wanted to congratulate Trevor Wilks and Tess Graziano, who won our CAS High School Arts Award recipients. Trevor for music and Tess for art. This award honors Connecticut's outstanding high school visual and performing arts students. They will be celebrated at a virtual ceremony to be broadcasted on Fox 61 on June 13. We had some Barlow speakers place at the state finals and at competitions during the April break for debate. So Graham Litz was fourth varsity team at CDA State Finals, third varsity team and fifth varsity speaker at Yale Osterwise Parliamentary. Ben Flegelman won fourth varsity team at CDA State Finals, third varsity team and 10th varsity speaker at Yale Osterwise. And Ian O'Reilly was a fourth varsity speaker at the CDA State Finals. Leighton Scher and Katie Gutowski, they won top seed, advancing from the semifinals with a 99.6 out of 100 in the virtual Supreme Court. We also wanted to recognize some following students who received some top scores in the National Latin Exam. The gold medal in summa cum laude certificate awards was awarded to Virginia Gray and Graham Litz. The silver medal and maxima cum laude certificate for second place winners was Jack Birmingham. And we had some magna cum laude certificates for third place winners. Olivia Basile, Joshua Hafner, Wade Eubanks, Sean McTagg, Zoe Skidell, Ben Servant and Ben Flegelman. And then a cum laude certificate for a fourth place winner was Kyle Murray. Also wanted to recognize Alexis Ogrenz, who was selected as a 2021 Connecticut winner of the National Center for Women and International Technology. She was recognized for her computing related aspirations and for her demonstrated outstanding aptitude and interest in STEM, especially information technology. Excuse me, and computing. Then we have a lot of events coming up at Barlow. Probably the most we've had since the start of this year, which is really exciting now that we're coming into these warmer months. And the pandemic is relaxing a little bit, so we can really have a lot of these awesome events that we've been looking forward to all year. So next week on May 3, we have the annual Region Nine District Meeting. And then there's the World Language Honors Society Induction Ceremony, which will be held virtually on May 6. May 16, we have our Future Falcon Field Day at the stadium, that's an afternoon event. So that'll be for, I assume that the eighth graders coming into Barlow. The day before that, on May 15, on a Thursday, we will be having our senior show, which is sort of like our Barlow Night Live event. We're finalizing some details from that and starting rehearsals now, which is really exciting. The following Friday on May 21, we have the senior prom, which will be held at Michael's at the Grove in Bethel. I know Dr. Penn is going to be giving us a lot of details about that later. But just quickly, we wanted to thank the PTSA. I've been on the board, the committee, sorry, for senior prom, so helping out from the student side and communicating with the PTSA. They've been a huge help and we're moving things along nicely there. I know Dr. Penn will give you some more details later. We also have throughout the month of May and even for the first time this year into the month of June, we'll be having our AP exams. That starts next week with some earlier ones like A Push and some of the other ones. And then it extends all the way past prom into the late May. And then I know we'll even have some virtual online ones in the beginning of June. Speaking of late May, on May 26, we have our Joel Barlow High School Legacy Society Ceremony, which will be held virtually. And on May 27, we will have the annual Barlow Palooza Event, which we will be bringing back in person by invitation at 5 o'clock on that May 27. And then tentatively pending approval, we will be having our final Coffee House Event also on, not on that Thursday, but on the following day, May 28, the day before Memorial Day weekend. We'll be having our final Coffee House Event then tentatively. And then on June 4, to start June, we will have our Awards Night held virtually at 6 PM. An Evening of the Arts Event, which had their first rehearsal today, it went really well. We started singing our songs, which was really exciting. We will be having performances for our Evening of the Arts on June 5 and 6, which will be held in person at Barlow. And then June 16 will bring us to graduation with the rain date being June 17. It'll be down at the stadium in person, not virtual. And we've been starting some stuff with that as well. Again, I think Dr. Penn will be giving details later. We, from the student side, we had our possible valedictorian speakers submit their speeches last week. So that process is starting up and we're getting very excited about that. The other thing that happened recently was we had our student vaccination clinic this weekend. I had a lot of friends who attended, they said it was a really smooth process. They said they're very excited for that second shot coming up soon. And for, you know, certain restrictions to be lifted according to the CDC today for themselves individually, which will be really nice. And we were very happy that the school was able to set that up for them and for all of us seniors and juniors. And so that went really well and we are looking forward to all of these events later in the year. I'm happy to answer questions from the student side about prom or graduation. I know Dr. Penn will touch on details later, but other than that, I think that's basically what we got going on. Yes, Mr. D'Agostino?
So I just wanted to note, you know, based on the state Latin scores and everything, that Latin is back, baby. So I want all the students to know that Latin is back and sign up because, you know, it's something that's we've been very proud of at Barlow in the past. And we suffered, you know, some waning enrollment issues, but again, sign up, Latin is back. Secondly, Mr. Monson, DC bound, what's, is this?
Yes, I am DC bound, I'll be going to the George Washington University next year, yep.
Well, congratulations to you. They're lucky to have you and we're sorry to lose you, but you gotta grow up at some point. So we gotta, we gotta lose you, gotta let you go.
Thank you.
A few more meetings though. He's not graduated yet.
I get that, I get that, I get that. So, so that's great, and then you said Palooza is live?
Yeah, in person, in person, the note I have here is by invitation. So I, I'm not sure the details of how that will work as far as who specifically can attend. I assume it will be at least families of the students presenting with their passages projects. I don't know how it will work for the rest of the community.
Mr. Penn, do you have more updates in yours?
I have updates when we get to that part of the agenda, yep.
Okay, great.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you, Max.
No worries.
All right, any other questions for Max from the board members?
Do you know the only piece that Max didn't mention, and I'm sorry, Max, it was probably because I'm looking at my desk, but there are so many sport events, sporting events taking place. The campus is alive again after school and our teams are competing, it's wonderful. And there, those, many of those events are open because they're outside, so come cheer on our teams. And all of those events are all posted on the website, I don't have to go through all the competitions.
And with, and with that sort of getting back to spring feeling and all that, it was really nice today to have that first rehearsal for Evening of the Arts. Felt really normal, you know, kids going to the ridge in between school and rehearsal and all hanging out before distance in the lobby there. And you know, theater's coming back. We had a, there was also a workshop that took place last week that they set up for the theater department through the ACT, which was really nice. So theater's coming back, sports are back, things are feeling back to normal, which is really nice.
Fantastic.
Max, I just wanted to know, everybody's excited about prom being in person and.
Yes, very excited. Yes, very excited, we're, the committee's working hard, the PTSA is working hard, the administration's working hard. We're, we're putting all those pieces together right now. And I know Dr. Penn will give you some more details later, but it's, it's looking like it's gonna be a really, really fun event and everyone's very excited for it, absolutely.
That's great, because you guys have had a long haul through this, so you deserve it.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right, any other questions, comments, board members? All right, fantastic, thank you, Max.
No worries.
You can, you can stay for the rest of the meeting or if you've got homework, feel free to log off.
We'll see, yeah.
All right, very good, all right, thank you. So we'll move on then to item four on the agenda, public comment. And I see we do have some members of the public on. So if you would like to comment, do ask that you introduce yourself, name and address. Either put the hand symbol up in, on the chat side or wave in your tile there with your video and we will recognize you. Name and address, please limit your comments to two minutes and to the items that are on the agenda would be appreciated. And we'll go ahead and open it up, so if anyone would like to speak from the public, please raise your hand or the hand symbol and we'll recognize you. Open up your mic, all right, I see Dana Benson. Go ahead and unmute yourself and. Good.
It's not on the agenda, so I'm not going, I'm just going to say that I hope at some point, I understand that the ER9.
Sorry Dana, for the record, we need your name, address, sorry.
Dana Benson, 34 Pond Road East, and Dana Benson, 34 Pond Road East.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to say that I hope at some point there will, there will be discussion of the survey questions that have been submitted to the boards by the ER9 Diversity Task Force Group, and I will have things to say. And I have sent letters to the board regarding my views on some of those questions, but that's not agenda tonight, so I don't have anything to say beyond. Great to hear that the Barlow's back and kids are able to have a more normal spring experience.
Great, thank you, and yes, when, when that matter is on the agenda, we'll have it on there for public to know. Thank you, thank you for your comments, anyone else from the public would like to say anything? Do you have another round of public comment at the end? All right, I don't see any other. Hands up, okay, so then we'll move on to item number five on the agenda, board member comment. Any members of the board like to comment? See, Mike?
So I just wanted to make a quick comment, I don't want to take a lot of time, but you know, when I heard the, you know, Max's report and everything and you just kind of absorbing it all, but I think we really need to acknowledge and commend, you know, our students and our staff for their resilience and seeing how, you know, things, you know, I'm not gonna be so bold as to say everything's going back to normal, but things are starting to get closer to normalcy than they were before. And we're striving towards that and it's, you know, it's really significant when you look at what everyone has been through and how, again, how resilient and, and you know, you know, our students and our staff have been, you know, listening to the, you know, the CDAs and, you know, Tess Graziano wins the Theater Awards and, and, you know, our play is back on top, which has happened in the past. And, you know, hearing all the debate accolades and, and, you know, again, the Latin, state Latin stuff and knowing that sports is going on and all that stuff, it is really something for us to, you know, appreciate that, again, despite everything everyone's been through, you know, they have come through this and are forging ahead. And, you know, I think we really need to acknowledge and appreciate their resilience and their talent. So I just wanted to, to mention that in board member comment, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members with comments? I may, I do have one comment, but I don't want to steal thunder from any of the administrative reports coming up. But was anybody going to mention around the US News World Report that came out with rankings? All right, so I will, I will go ahead and with me, I'll pull it up, but it was recently announced. And it was in, in the patch for the Weston Reading, Eastern Connecticut. And it was from the US News World Report, it just came out in the patch today. But Joe Barlow High School was named to one of the best high schools in the country by their ranking. We, out of the 17,800 public high schools, we came in third in the state and 709 in the nation. So the only ones higher than us in the nation, well, Weston was on there as well, but we, we came out third in. Yes, sorry, get my numbers wrong here, so 709 in the nation and 16 in Connecticut for Joe Barlow. So again, we're up in the top tier with all the other Dergay schools in Connecticut. And there's a long article in the patch in the US News and World Report. So again, it's great to be recognized for all the hard work of the faculty and administration of the teachers, keeping us in the top rankings and making, making the cut there in the top list for US News and World Report of outstanding schools. All right, any other board members, yes, a big applause for everybody. Thank you again through all COVID and everything and still staying in the top rankings is fantastic, so we appreciate that. Any other board member comment? All right, then moving on to administrative reports, item number six. And we'll start with the superintendent's report, Sir Dr. Harrison.
Good evening, board members. You will be hearing lots of information tonight about end of the year activities. And Max already gave some previews as far as awards and award season. I did want to make, to share a couple of things, one related to this upcoming award season. As the board is aware, Region Nine School District has determined after investigation that former Joel Barlow High School teacher and athletic director Pam Goodpastor engaged in an inappropriate conduct with a student in the 1970s. Based on this determination, Region Nine is removing honoraria related to Ms. Goodpastor. Region Nine has reported the information to all of the appropriate authorities. But given the passage of time, we do not expect any further action. Rather than removing the honoraria related to Ms. Goodpastor with no explanation, the district concluded that it was important to be transparent with the community about the reason. I will say that in order to respect the privacy of others involved, we will not be able to provide any additional details. So I wanted to share that information. This week, the district submitted the SIR2 grant. There are a couple of really exciting things related to this. As a reminder, the SIR2 is the federal funds coming to school districts in order to address the response to COVID and COVID recovery. As a state, the state has four priority areas and our focus grant, which is right around $85,000 for this SIR2, we're expecting an additional round of grant funding in just a few weeks. That's now being called SIR3 funds, but there are four priority areas that we had to choose from in order to align our plan to access those funds. Our plan is focused on priority area number one, which is around academic supports, learning loss, learning acceleration and recovery. And so as part of our plan, the district will assemble a small and diverse acceleration planning team who will plan and lead an initiative around acceleration. I think I mentioned before that really in thinking about this focus on acceleration as an instructional strategy, it's a different approach rather than looking at learning loss from a deficit standpoint, where we're only just trying to fill gaps, but really addressing any unfinished learning while also continuing to build capacity with our students. Our district, our three districts will be part of the larger network of districts called the Acceleration Network Improvement Community. And that would give us an opportunity to exchange ideas, work with other districts, connect with other teachers and really benefit from an economy of scale. The district will also be utilizing university interns in order to increase with some of the small group instruction and targeted intervention support for our students needing additional help going into next year. Dr. Pearson Yugal will be talking a little bit more about that, but that's a really sort of innovative way to be able to use staff, use human resources a little bit differently than we've done in the past without being concerned about hiring a bunch of new staff and then having to let people go. But really thinking about sort of the broad picture where we want to go in order to respond to the needs of our students following the pandemic. And then lastly, there's already been a lot of work that's happened in the past with summer learning at the high school. And we are planning to broaden that with, in collaboration with administration, with a real focus on acceleration in core content areas, of course, grade credit recovery, but also looking at enrichment opportunities. This is also a really great opportunity to work with students on accomplishing some of their graduation requirements, like some of the writing requirements or some of the service learning projects, so that they, students who may have had, been a little bit behind this year in getting all of that, that work done, that there'll be opportunities for them to engage in some of that unfinished learning over the summer. The last thing that I will say is we will not have another Region Nine Board Meeting prior to Teacher Appreciation Week, which is May 3 through the 7. So just wanted to take an opportunity and say a huge thank you to our teaching staff. I think as Mr. D'Agostino noted, as we're hearing about the things happening this spring, it does sound like we're getting back to normal and, you know, resilience is not something that just happens, but it really takes a lot of work and effort and coordination and collaboration and flexibility from, from the staff. And I just want to commend the Joe Barlow staff for, for their, there've been so many times throughout this school year in particular, that, that they have had to pivot to different learning models, using different instructional tools and just really doing whatever it takes to meet the needs of our students. And so I can't say how appreciative I am on behalf of our students, of course, on behalf of the board and the entire community. Just a huge thank you to, to our teachers and I know that we look forward to celebrating them during Teacher Appreciation Week, but I did want to take the opportunity to share that tonight. Todd, you're on mute.
Yes, I am, thank you. It's helpful if you can hear me. I also wanted to thank the teachers and everyone as well, for teachers appreciation, so thank you for, for doing that and the rest of the board as well. Again, we can't thank everyone for all their, their hard work and, and helping us get through everything and. Give us, back to near normal state, we'll be there soon, but thank you again for everything that's going on.
I have one quick question.
Yes, you may.
So.
Quick question.
So, so it's something for Dr. Harrison, as we move forward. So you did, you mess, you mentioned the SIR2 grant funding, which again, that's based on Title I. So, but I know there's other significant grant monies that are coming to the district through American Relief Funding or however that's classified relating to schools. And so I think that it would be helpful for board members if maybe you could share with us, not tonight, putting you on the spot, but maybe if you could share with us at the May meeting. Again, I'm sure Mr. Zachary would have to give you a total of all those funds. And it would be helpful to know what the plan is for how to use those funds so that we could kind of be able to speak intelligently when people ask us and to also help, you know, with any guidance or, you know, input that you might seek as to how you would allocate those funds. And in fact, I think it might be even helpful if we could get some sort of a document that, that showed all of the funds, you know, all the grants that we received through the entire pandemic, you know, and what those funds were used for. And then again, the, the additional funding that we anticipate and how, again, we would allocate those funds. Just because I think it's helpful for the public to understand, you know, the totality of the grant funding and exactly what we've used it for. And it's been my understanding that most of what we've used grant money has been to reimburse or, or, you know, to replace the monies that we took out of the operating budget for pandemic related expenses, which is what the intent of most of the funding is. But there seems to be the potential for a significant amount of grant funding coming in the future. And I think it's, that has more of a different purpose or can have more of a different purpose. So it would be helpful to know the plan for how to allocate that.
So you're looking, so formalized the request, Mike, then you're, you're asking for a report of grants past present and future and then what they've been allocated for the May meeting, if I can summarize, is that the request?
Yes, and yes, that would be helpful, but, but again, I think mainly for the May meeting, that the, the vision of what we are going to do with those.
With the future grants, the future.
Because I think they will be significant and I think, you know, they can be used for many purposes and it would be helpful for us to articulate how we plan to use them.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to share that, Mike, and we're, it seems like the guidance that we, that we receive for SIR2 will be extended for the, the next round of grants, which the rescue funds, which now people are calling SIR3. But, but we're still waiting, I'm waiting on final confirmation of that and then final confirmation of numbers. So. But but we're still waiting, I'm I'm waiting on final confirmation of that and then final confirmation of numbers. So I I don't anticipate that won't have that information by by the May meeting. I'm 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 sure that we will. But even if we don't, we could talk about sort of the 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 process for the the needs assessment that we that that we do leading up to that to to determine what the grant areas or like what the focus of the grant should be. So I'm happy to do.
Thank you. So I've noted, we'll look to add that to the agenda and we're making that request.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question for to the chair? Mike, we have the what we've done in the past for one or two of the other districts, our actual application for the we've printed that out because that gives the detail of where where we spent the money, the amounts and the reimbursement. So it's actually just sort of print out the actual application. We have the detailed application where we're spending it, how much we spent and then document the actual expenditure for the reimbursement. Would that suffice for you, Mike?
Well, I I think that would be helpful if that if that's part that could kind of streamline.
Not perspective, how about the historical stuff?
Right, I think that would be helpful, but like I said, I'm 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 eager to test out this new miraculous e-finance system that can give us all kinds of data and all kinds of information that we've been seeking. And so again, I I think it would be nice to see all the grant money and how all of it was spent. So if if you can do it through the applications, I think that's fine. But if we need to supplement it with our wonder system, I think that would be great as well.
Well, we'll leave that to your discretion, Mr. Zachary, how to pull the information together for us for the May meeting. All right, any other, anything else, Dr. Harrison? Nope, okay, we'll move on to the Assistant Superintendent.
Okay, I'm gonna do my best. I'm having some wifi issues this evening, so I I do want to just provide a little bit more detail about a portion of the S R grant grant funding that Dr. Harrison just explained, which is that we are really looking forward to once again being able to support student teachers at the high school. We put all student teaching experiences on hold for this year for a number of different reasons. And we paused most of the internships as well. We had been hosting unpaid internships in years past, but next year, in part because of grant funding. We are looking to bring in academic interns who will support in the various subject areas, help support our students, help support our staff as well as being of course a wonderful service to the education profession. And also continue to host internships in the area of counseling and social work and in this year, for instance, we did have one administrative intern as well. So I am working actively with the institutions in our area to try and solicit prospective interns. And the school has already interviewed a number of possible interns and at this point, I think we have tentatively confirmed three for next year. So we are really looking forward to that. I think it'll be wonderful support. As well as also providing the ability to use those interns as building subs when their student teaching completes as well.
Thank you. Any any questions or comments from board members?
I'm just a little curious about the intern program if if Dr. Pearson you go could kind of explain it a little better in that. So these interns are finished with school or they're still in school and they work in the district for a certain number of days during the week or, you know, if you could kind of explain that and then kind of what our vision is for continuance of using the interns. You you mentioned that grant funding had something to do with that possibly, but I thought that the interns were the a a very cost efficient way of of getting coverage and, you know, greater coverage for either support or for coverage of of you know, classes with as subs, but if you could just speak to that a little bit about how we would, what our vision would be moving forward and
I'm 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 happy to clarify. So there are some unpaid internships that have been available and will continue to be available. And those are most commonly in the counseling department. Sometimes in related services in special education, but most often we find them in counseling, social work, psychology. The more common interns and those that we we have not used at Joel Barlow, at least during my tenure in ER nine are academic interns. And in those situations, the intern has completed most of the coursework to gain certification. And they need to complete their pre-service clinical experience, which is called student teaching. Typically, student teaching experiences last for ten to twelve weeks. And depending on the institution, the student teaching is either at the beginning of the year. Or sometimes it's in the second half of the year. So the three people we have confirmed will actually begin the year in their student teaching. So they will be matched with a Connecticut Team Certified Mentor. They will complete ten to twelve weeks in that individual's classroom, working really solely with that teacher's roster of students. And then when that time period concludes, that that individual who has completed the student teaching will then become a building intern and will be available to assist both within that same department and also across the school, sometimes serving as a substitute teacher, sometimes serving as an assistant to students in various classrooms. And that's a a cost efficient way to support our students and to support the district. It's not for free. Depending on the program, it typically costs fifteen thousand dollars in intern. But then we have that intern with us for the full year.
Right, so if if we're, again, I I might be misspeaking here, but if we're gonna have three at fifteen thousand, that's forty five thousand dollars, right? And so so if if we're funding that mainly due to grant funding next year. I think it would be helpful if we knew what the plan was moving forward. Would that forty five thousand be something that we would be looking to continue into the following school year? Or is this more of kind of a pilot program to see how it works out and to to kind of make that determination as you move forward?
Right, so we we were looking at this actually as a as a good use of grant funding and that then we will not have a a funding cliff, so to speak, because we're not hiring these people as permanent employees. But they will, you know, they will serve their students, serve the district for a full year. We're looking right now at the two years that we will have with grant funding. And if year one goes well with our internships and we will have interns in all five of the buildings, but speaking about Region Nine this evening. Then we would certainly consider continuing as we revise the grant proposal for year two. Continuing with interns in the second year.
Thank you.
Mr. De Agostino, in some of my previous districts, we use this hybrid program as an effective tool to deal with substitute shortage and to identify talent at an early stage. So you get them in the building for ten to twelve weeks, you see the talent, you can get, you know, get to them before others get to them and then it becomes a recruiting tool also. So it's sort of a pipeline. You have a direct connection with the local universities that producing the young aspiring teachers.
Right, no, and 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 actually, I'm I'm a little more familiar with it than you might think. I I was just kind of curious because we haven't done it in the past, but we're doing it now. And it seems like we're saying we're doing it now because of the grant funding. Again, I'm I'm more curious as to what our our vision is moving forward and and so that we can kind of anticipate and plan for how it would be sustained moving forward.
Right, we have supported student teachers for many years at Barlow. This will be the first time and certainly many, many years that we will have full-time interns that will serve the school, either before their student teaching or after it.
Right, again, thank you.
I look forward to the program. All right, any anything else, Dr. Chris and you?
That's it for me this evening.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, then moving on to Director of Finance and Operations, Mr. Zachary.
Get off mute here. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Chair, can you bring up the the budget object summary report, please, and then we'll go to healthcare?
And actually, I
Let me share, I can do it.
Yeah, I would say let me let you share because I was just looking for the other reports.
It was set in a zip file, so you might not have noticed it.
Okay, you should be able to share and while you're talking.
All right, hold on, let me. All right, cheers, there we go. Can everyone see that? I need to enlarge.
Yeah, a little, little small. Yeah, there we go.
So good evening, everyone. This is the our our new format of budget object summary. As you recall, we indicate the actual expenditures from last year in the far left. The budget expenditures in next column, the month-to-date expenditures, that would be in this case, the month-to-date through April, at least April of last last Friday. The year-to-date expenditures, then the encumbered, then we added this column, anticipated expenditures, the things that we fully anticipate, we have identified purpose for, but just have not encumbered as of yet. And then the last column will be the unexpended budget. And I'll just cut to the chase. I know the usual question is how much do we have left? So I will scroll down here. I think we previously said around two hundred fifty thousand dollars remaining balance. As you can see, we're still pretty much on target with that. That's with basically ninety nine percent of the budget being. It's okay.
Yep, go ahead.
So the anticipated expenditures, most of it's salaries. You see that three point seven million dollars, most of that salaries. But I can scroll up. If you have any particular questions, there's some other things beyond salaries that we've had anticipated expenditures. But for like I said, the most part, most of that is salary and healthcare claims and social security. But there are some additional supplies and things of that nature that in consultation with Dr. Penn and her staff, they've indicated they anticipate using some of the funds, so that's also indicated in that column. So I'll turn it over. If you have any questions, you want to go into details, particular accounts, we can do that.
Any ideas to what, when those, you know, you'd mentioned that there might be some funds that would be used and perhaps moved to different line items, any sense of what that might be yet or?
So what we're, as I had this funny, I had this conversation with Dr. Penn today. We've had some staff changes and what the the goal is to see how much that's available to take care of some, like some of the retirement payout. So we can do it out of this year's funds. It frees up money that we thought about for next year, but obviously we'd come back to the board with those decisions, but that's sort of our thinking, try to preserve those funds for some of those things that we had talked about for staff to retire and to have sick day payouts and things of that nature. Yes, Mike?
Yeah, so so I'm curious, and again, I was gonna make this request anyway, but I think it would be good to get it in in May, which is I'm curious as to all the I'm curious as to transfers and I I'd like to see areas where monies were transferred and what those funds were used for. Once they were, once it was transferred and 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 again, I I know you can say it's in the transfer report or whatever, but I I'd like to see, again, I hope that our our new whiz system here can can do stuff like that, but so I I guess what what I'm really curious about is so looking at the central office budget. There was an eighty six thousand dollar position in there. So again, a third of the eighty six thousand dollars was allocated through the Region Nine budget. I would be curious as to whether those funds have been, you know, are still there and will be unexpended or whether some of that was repurposed and where it was repurposed and how it was used. And again, in in totality, you know, what the extent of those funds may be. And and I'm also curious again as to on on our, you know, Region Nine level. And and I guess where where I'm going is when I look at the transfer report and again, begging all due respect, you haven't gotten to the transfer report yet, so we we can't. I don't, I don't want to critique you on something that you haven't had a chance to explain yet, but when I do look at it, it looks like there's sixteen thousand dollars that were for transportation and now it's being spent on something else. Again, if it's an overage, if it's a shortfall, if it's something like that, a specific need. Then I I think that that's, you know, appropriate and and that's what we we pay you guys to do. However, I just think that it would be helpful if we could see those type of things and I'm, again, before you get there, I'm I'm anticipating that you're seeking requests to transfer the sixteen thousand, right? That's not something that's already been done. Because as we know, transfers in excess of ten thousand dollars require board authorization. So again, not not trying to put you on the spot there, but just trying to so better understand the process here.
Like, it sounds like what you're asking for is not just a transfer report, but some of the detailed backup that goes into the individual, like what the the sort of description, what went, what what, where it came from and where it was going to. Is that correct?
Well, well, yeah, and and again, I guess I I'm wondering, so I'm I'm gonna make the assumption that the the funding for that position at central office are probably still there because the Region Nine portion of that allocation would be greater than ten thousand dollars. So in order for that to have been, you know, reallocated or repurposed, it would have required authorization from the Region Nine Board. So I'm I'm sure that's still there, but
About whether, I'm not sure that's the case, but we can talk about the specifics or authorization at central office. But I I concur and agree with you about the Region Nine budget, but I I have to look at the actual policies regarding the central office. I'm not familiar with what what it says particularly. But generally speaking, in a single district, that wouldn't be required. Obviously, we're we're in a unique situation. We have three different districts here.
But well, and and again, I understand that I guess the expectations should be clearly defined as to what the board would expect. And and frankly, what the what the taxpayers would expect would happen there. So maybe it's it's at least worthy of a discussion so that we can clarify that and find consensus for moving forward, but
Agreed.
I think that would be helpful.
Any other questions on the budget object summary?
All right, I'm gonna stop my share and we're gonna pivot to healthcare, which if you recall from our last meeting, there was some, there was some uncertainty because of the Mr. Chair is telling me only one person can share at a time, so I don't know what happened.
You should still be able to share. I don't think anyone else is.
Let's, one participant can share at a time, so I stopped sharing, so I don't know if it's a lag.
Maybe, I don't see anybody else sharing. It should come back to you. If not, I've got it open here. I can open the.
All right, as you recall, from the last couple of months, we've been having an issue getting data because of the issue at Anthem. And there was, they had a system upgrade that caused some data to be lagging. So it's finally sort of working its way through and we were talking about the unknown since we didn't know, we didn't have the claims history. I'm pleased to say that Region Nine, whether that lag will find substantial damage. I unfortunately can't say that about some of our other districts. One of our other districts got hit pretty hard in that lag. But Region Nine, and this is what I'm talking about, you see in January, we're on at sixty seven thousand in claims. Five thousand in February and then it jumps to three seventy nine in March, because that's sort of the lag. So the average of those three months works out to be about a hundred fifty thousand per month, which is slightly more than our yearly, our year-to-date average. So basically for those three months, we were basically up over the previous two months, but sort of on on par for the year. So I scroll down, you you see our year-to-date average was one forty five. Those three months, if you average those three months, it comes out to be about one fifty. So it's just that three seventy nine really represents claims that occurred in January and February, but it was because of their system lag, it just all shows up and and So it's just that 379 really represents uh claims that occurred in January and February, but it was because of their system lag, it just all shows up in in uh March.
Okay.
So for, the short and sweet is, we're we're doing fine in regards to our performance, um, uh, year-to-date. Uh, we're slightly above uh the previous year, we were at 128 last year, we're at 145 this year, but it's much lower than our three-year average.
Can you detail the systems lag and and what what was the cause of that, and is that something we should anticipate moving forward? Was that with our system, was that with Brown and Brown, who, with Anthem, where was?
Migrated to a new platform in January, so all that migration at Anthem caused the lag in the claims coming through, and and I don't know if you recall, if you can go back to the previous meetings, I I gave you all sort of notice that that was gonna happen, and then it was confirmed when we got to January and February, and saw how how miniscule claims we had. So it was all about Anthem's one-time system migration, so it shouldn't be an ongoing issue, but we had to deal with when they they migrated uh to a new platform in January, Mike.
Right, so they have assured us or kind of uh confirmed that it was a one-time uh.
Assuming they don't make the migrations, yes, and until the next system migration, I think we should be fine.
Okay.
What what's the, what's the typical lag, you know, setting the system, Anthem system processing issue aside, in other words, so how often?
Typically, there is no lag, so what you've seen the previous months, that that would be the previous months, so like, if you look, let's look at November. Uh, November shows 126,965 in claims, so in early December, we would have gotten confirmation that we had 126,965 in claims in November, and we were showing you that information in December for the November claims, but if we cut, fast forward to there, they went live in the system migration on January 1. So all of January, there was, it was sort of backlog, so you saw the 67,000, it was a big drop, and like, well, how much more of a lag? And then it got, it compounded itself down to the 5,000 claims in February, and then it caught up in March, where you see that the jump to 300, almost $380,000 in claims.
But I guess my my question is just in general, like, so for example, if I look at the, let's just use the November 165,93 as example, those were claims submitted in November, but they could have been for services provided in earlier months, correct?
Could have been, but it's whenever the claims get submitted, so yes, the services could have been provided in earlier months, but it's based on the claim submission, correct, Joe? And for our purposes, we don't really, it's about when the bill shows up, so I I, we're not really concerned about when the the procedure or the visit occurred, but when the bill shows up is when we're, what we're most concerned about. So the the net of that is um our fund balance at the, in the March is 520,530. So we're, we we've got multiple months of uh cushion in the fund balance, so we're in a a healthy position.
So how many months is that, just so that I know, I haven't done the math?
You, Mike, if you assume the 145 average from down here.
Yeah.
Months is three, uh, so that's about just over three months' worth.
And and the recommendation is two and a half months?
Yes, sir.
So we don't have the cushion that we had at one point, we're we're back to where we're pretty close to uh the recommended um.
Yes, that's what it looks like, yep.
Right?
At the end of March, yes, it will obviously change when we get April's numbers in, seeing how April does, but at the end of March, yes, Mike.
And so we started the school year with how many months reserve? And again, you don't have to do the math, we're close to where we started, the reserve has kind of held a um form, or have we used some of the reserve, even though we're having a great year?
You started the year with $1.1 million.
And we're down to 520?
Yep.
And what's the forecast moving forward? Are we going down to 210?
No, I I I don't think so, because if you used, if you, I'd have to go do the projection out based on the the uh, the premium.
Yeah.
But I think you're gonna end up in, basically, I think anywhere from five to where you were beginning of 1920, 600,000, 700,000.
Yeah, the the 1.1 was about eight months, if you use the 145, so we started with about eight months, we're down to three months.
Right, but but we reduced the contributions, right?
Yes.
So what I'm, what I'm, again, even though we're having uh, again, a a good year, uh, um, I just want to make sure that we're not on a crash course here. Um, that we we feel that that number is gonna hold firm uh in that two and a half to three months, um.
Well, if if we use the 145 average, yes, but I mean, we won't know until claims come in.
Well, no, again, I I understand that, I'm just saying, if we went from over a million down to 520, yet all of our claims uh per month seem to be on target or under target, it means that we we've lowered the the um level of funding for the overall program, right? And that's why the the reserve is coming down, I just want to make sure that it's not on a crash course to go way down.
But if I look at the, I just, I did the numbers um for the last, the gin, feb, march, right, um, that we had the deferral piece to it. Um, and it's only 35,000 more rounded um to those same three months from the previous year.
Yeah.
So it's a little, but not a lot higher.
Based on past history, right?
We're trending ahead of last year, if you look at last year, you had a 1.5 million in claims, you're already at 1.3 through March. So you've got April, May, June left, so if you, if you assume the 145, it's gonna put you above, not a lot, but it's gonna put you above last year's claims.
Right, but in order for that reserve to have come down, $500,000 plus, it means that the level of funding for the overall um expenses is down, right?
Well, yes, Mike, it's down because of the contribute, if you look at the deposit.
Contributions, right.
Contribution is.
The deposit is down 1.4 million, and we don't, we don't, we don't request the money from the town until we need it, since we haven't needed it, you haven't requested it, so it's available, you just haven't needed it, so you haven't pulled, you haven't, you haven't drawn it in.
I I understand, I I don't want to draw this out, I just want to hear from uh the experts that as we move this forward, in its current projections, uh, that we don't anticipate having less than 520 or $500,000 in the reserve at the end of the year, barring the unforeseen, which which is why we have the reserve in the beginning, I'm just want to make sure that the level of funding is not um uh, has been factored in, that we're not gonna end up trending the same way that a- at the end of the year, we're gonna have, you know, 200,000 in there.
Mike, I I I feel very comfortable, we're gonna be fine, and out of the three districts, uh, I would say uh region nine is in the best position, and Easton's in the next best, and and Reading has, we have some issues in Readings we need to address, because our claims are, you know, are, we've had a very bad claim year in Reading. So yes, I I think we'll be fine at region nine.
Well, we'll continue to keep an eye on that.
You always have to be vigilant, because you, because um someone could have an unfortunate accident or illness that happened in April, which we haven't seen yet, and all of a sudden, we're having a different conversation.
Yes, and 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 I, believe me, I understand all that, I just want to make sure that our level of funding is not such that we're on a, on a trend that we're um drawing from the reserve each month to the point where we're going to be less than what um.
You need to remember is, when we allocate money for the reserve in the budget, it doesn't actually get put into the bank account until we need it, since we haven't needed this year, that's why you see the the deposits is significantly lower than the previous years. Because we, that's just a reflection of how well it's been performing, the the town holds on to the money until we actually need it, and since we haven't needed it this year, it's not showing it, that deposits is what's actually been deposited into the bank account.
But we don't fund the reserve, we didn't fund the reserve this year.
No, we didn't, my my point to you is that that 520 is what we still actually have in our our bank account that's been rolled over, so when we need more money, like back in the end of March, we had to go get a a large deposit made because of claims in one of our other districts, so we the the, we didn't have enough money in the bank account, so we had to get, pull it from the town, deposit it, so the checks were clear. We hadn't had to pull a lot of funds for region nine, because of the positive claims history, so that's why you don't, you only see a million dollars over deposits so far. Compared, you look at the previous years, you're 2.5, 2.4, 2.8, 2.9, it's just, we, you've, that's a reflection of the positive claims history this year, you haven't had to make too many deposits, and the positive is what we're actually putting into the bank account.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, any more questions?
I think we're good here, we'll just keep an eye on it, right?
Yeah.
All right, um.
I, I see transfer reports on here, but I don't see the documents, I don't know what happened there, but I, it should be there, but I don't see it, so Mike, it, to your earlier point, I had to, because it's, it shows, it's not showing up.
I I don't see it in the zip file either.
Actually, I, I see it, you want me to share? I could share.
Yeah, please do, because I don't see it.
See. You see that?
There is, yep.
Yeah, it was, it was in the zip file scan, for whatever reason, from separate from the other files, I don't know why.
Ah, okay, that makes me why I didn't see it.
Okay.
Um, so this is the trash report, and the dates are indicated there, so it's not uh, it's most of April and some of March, uh, so uh, we didn't have a lot of transfers. So to Mike, to your point about the 16,000, you want some uh details uh on that breakdown, I suspect it came from multiple accounts, but I can't, I have to go confirm that, uh, but uh, we will, I'll get you that detail that you're looking for.
But I guess to Mike's point, because it's over the limit, shouldn't the board be approving that?
That is a good point, go back and uh and and check on that. Uh, okay, Joe, if you could scroll down, I think most of other, it's just uh, you see the couple of things for rental lease into dues and fees. Uh, and once again, it's all sort of beyond the 16,000, sort of a run-of-the-mill stuff. Uh, because I think we had a previously, in the previous report, we talked about the uh the money the board had authorized for the professional services, I think we did that back in March or February, if I remember correctly. Gina, please correct me if I'm, if my memory is off.
No, that's correct, and if you're looking at that um transfer, I don't think they're numbered, but it's the um the transfer for $1,400, I think you went by right there.
Yep.
Um, that is the books that are required, because the money was put into professional services. Um, that's that same money that the board gave us for the consultative services, but the books had to be transferred into instructional supplies from that amount.
So uh acknowledging Mike's previous questions, Mike, do you have any additional questions or anyone else?
Well, yeah, I'm 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 a little confused uh still, which, again, I I don't want to wear everyone out tonight, I think we can have a more in-depth conversation made at our next meeting, but again, I I'm curious as to $16,000 out of student transportation going into equipment non-instructional. Um, I think certainly warrants uh some details, and
Mike, yeah.
And the fact that it was done on March 29th, um, when, again, it it, I I, I'm quite sure our our policy says that, and in fact, I think it's it's state statute that anything um over $10,000 um.
So that, and and the next report then can help.
Part of the previous thing you all approved, because I remember we had a whole discussion, Gina, if you're correct or wrong, we pulled up about pulling it out of transportation, so I may be part of that, and I don't know why it says equipment non-instructional, but I think that may be part of the stuff the board previously approved, but I'll go confirm that.
I I could, I could give you some detail, um, if if you'd like to, and the policies that um, that Mr. Dacino was referring to. So um, there are two policies I think that we're referring to, one is the transfer policy, it's 3160, and it allows the um superintendent I to transfer up to $25,000, and if there's a reason uh between accounts, if there's a reason to transfer more than that, uh, it has to be in line with safety, and that's the same as the purchasing policy, which is 3320, I think I wrote down. Um, and what this purchase is for is for mats for um the athletic department. So we did not anticipate having to purchase mats, um, it is a health and safety, it's the way we were able to have the season, I could have Mike Santangeli speak more to the specifics, but um, when we look at the policy, the exception seems to be if it's the health and safety of students, and so that's where that purchase of um mats for that particular transfer um is there.
And if I remember correctly, that was coming out of the athletic transportation to the athletic equipment.
Correct.
I I appreciate the clarification, I I just, I I don't think it's um I I think it's better if we discuss it at another meeting, I think, again, interpreting what the policy is, I think emergency situation allows the superintendent some leniency, uh, health and safety for for mats, it it does not qualify. Um, and again, I I think transfers over $10,000, it's very, very clear, we've done this in the past. Every year I've been here, it's in the policy, um, a- again, um let's, let's, let's clarify it so that we can um come to some consensus here of what should be done, but I I do not accept the explanations um in their current form, I think we need uh more um detail and discussion on that at some point.
All right, we'll, we'll hold that over to the next meeting. Anything else on the transfers?
Not for me, Mr. Chair, unless someone else has some additional questions.
All right, seeing none, anything else in your report, Mr. Zachary?
No, sir.
All right, thank you very much, then we will move on to building administration, Dr. Penn. I know you've got several items coming up in the discussion, possible action, but you got any other items that you?
I do, well, what I'm going to do is, I'm not going to speak at all, um, the best kind of report, I'm going to ask uh Michael DiStefano, our administrator for special education, to go through the special education report.
Okay, thank you, Gina. Good evening, everyone. So I'd like to start on, as 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 others have said, just to thank our entire staff, especially my special education-related service providers and support staff, they just done, have done such an amazing job this year, and I just wanted to highlight that. Specifically, as I've done in other months, I wanted to highlight one staff member in particular, Katie Moise is one of our teaching assistants, she is apt, I can't say, she's just amazing. Um, she has supported our math, science, and integrative support classes, she provides one-to-one tutoring and support for students. She um also runs our just homework program after school, she has supported our bridge services program when needed throughout the year. Um, as my board report says, it's, she really is the definition of flexa, flexible, reliable, and multi-talented, so I just wanted to highlight her um specifically. In terms of uh an update, some updates are on trainings, we're trying to do a, you know, a lot of trainings um to support our s- our students, our teachers, and our families, especially as we get closer to the summer. We started our parent seminar, and we had Peg Dawson um last week do her presentation on executive skills um to parents and staff at Joel Barlow, and that was really, um, that was really well received, we also had a follow-up with Peg Dawson, and she did a training for our special education teachers around working with students regarding executive functioning, Peg Dawson is really a leader in the field of executive skill deficits and working with students with ADHD and executive dysfunction, so it was a really good training, and it was gonna go a long way to help support our students and families. In terms of some upcoming trainings on the board report, it highlights Alec Miller, and Alec Miller, as you all know, are, is the head of the of our CBC, our DBT consultant group, it says mental health, but the actual title of his presentation, he's going to do for families on May 6th from 5 to 7, will be helping students, staff, and parents cope during and flourish after the pandemic, and it's gonna be around DBT skills and strategies at school and at home. Um, so that'll be a really great workshop, I recommend anybody to attend, I think it could be um helpful for all. And um, and that'll be on May 6th, and then following up on that will be May 13th from 5 to 7, will be Dr. Ellie Liebowitz, he's the head of the Yale Anxiety Program. And he has um, he has a specialty in anxiety, so he's gonna work with our families around strategies and skills for supporting students um that are experiencing, families who are experiencing anxiety, he has a real specialty with supporting students and families who um, around the accommodation of anxiety, so we'll have a focus on that and some supports and strategies for that. Um, let me, couple more updates. Um, in a previous uh board meeting, it may have been our last one, I was asked for an update on ESY, so we're well into planning around extended school year services, that's gonna take place from July 6th to July 11th. That's going to take place from July sixth to July thirtieth at Joel Barlow High School. One thing that we that the director of Easton and Reading and I talked about a bit, and we actually held off on it this year, was having a combined E S Y program where we would have some of our middle school, our middle school program and high school program together. There was a couple of reasons for that. I would say three in particular. One was around COVID and just in terms of, you know, bringing everyone together. And if for some reason, you know, when we were talking about this at that time, if there was to be, you know, any cases of COVID and having to shut down the entire programming of not having them separate, there's it it minimizes that exposure and and minimizes the chances of that. The other piece of it was there's some work being done at Joel Barlow High School over the summer. So there's going to be some limited ability to have air conditioning. So we want to make sure that we have, you know, the the ability to have as many students there might be impacted. So that was another reason to hold off. And then just in terms of the time for us to plan and organize it all, it's something that we definitely want to look at moving forward. I think it's a way to help support our students, their transition to Joel Barlow from Easton and Reading. And just also on cost saving from the business perspective, having that cost savings in terms of, you know, being able to have one nurse for in particular. That would be one way to save on that, possibly transportation as well. So it's something we're definitely looking at doing moving forward. A couple other updates. So in on page two of my report, I was asked in a previous meeting to to share with the board some idea, some information regarding the referrals to special education, as there's been a, you know, significant increase, which is it's not a region nine issue. It's it's something that many districts are 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 dealing with. And our referrals to special education last year for the nineteen twenty school year were twelve. Right now, we're up to twenty six referrals to special education. In the breakdown right now, as we speak, are eight stu- eight of those twenty six students were found eligible for special education. Ten were found ineligible for special education and six were pending. That doesn't add up to twenty six particularly. There is a couple that are just we'll just leave it as other for right now and under public comment. In terms of the next graph is broke, these are our five oh fours for this year. So our our students who are found eligible for section five oh four plans. And as you could see, just looking at the graph, it's it's broken down based on month and by grade level. So you could just clearly see that there's a significant increase, you know, an increase across the board for each grade level as the year has progressed. Even with our our twelfth graders, you could see from the beginning of the year, the number of, and I could, let me see if I could get the exact number for you. I just have to open up my document, sorry.
It's almost doubled.
Yeah. So in terms of in November of in November, there were twenty six twelfth graders with five oh four plans. Right now, we're at fifty students with five oh four plans as twelfth graders. And I don't know, Paula, if you want to jump in and comment on that at all.
Yeah, I mean, I just think we are seeing a increase in anxiety and depression from the social isolation, the pandemic. All of these students who qualify have medical documentation. And and it is just an increasing issue, and I'm concerned for next year when we bring back all the students who are currently in cohort C, who have not been in school for almost a full year. I I just am concerned that we're going to see another spike in students requiring services.
Thank you, Paula. A few more updates for me, and just to go back to the trainings, because I I should have indicated a few more. This Friday, we're actually starting our four days of intensive DBT training for our clinical staff, for our school counselors, our school social workers, some of our members of our bridge staff. That'll be starting this Friday. We also had Dr. Alec Miller come in and do a half-day presentation to all of our staff regarding DBT skills in the school. And then later on in this year, we're also going to have Marilyn Friend, who is a expert in the area of co-teaching. She's going to be coming in and doing a department meeting for my staff and some of our regular education staff around effectively co-teaching in the at the high school level. So that'll be great. Let's see, a few more updates. In terms of our our bridge, our three E program and our out-of-district placements, they've all remained steady, which is really good, good news. Many districts around the around the state are seeing increases in terms of out-of-district placements. And and that's something that it has remained steady for now with us. There is a couple other updates. There the state has offered all districts to apply for a twenty thousand dollar grant that that districts could use to help support students as they as we transition back from into the school year next year. And I did apply for that on behalf of Region Nine. And it's really about, you know, thinking about ways that we could continue to best support our special education students. So what I wrote the grant on was we obviously want all of our staff to have time to work and have availability to work with our students. So I wrote the grant around providing funds so that we could support our staff in completing assessments and that they could do outside of the school day and perhaps even in the summer. This way, they could get a head start on the fall evaluations, making them much more available, our special education teachers to work with students that are coming back into the building and our related service providers, as as Paula, you know, rightfully indicated. We're really concerned about students as they come back and and the impact that anxiety will have as students come back from from our cohort C and and back into the building full-time. So we want to make sure we have staff on call and available to work with students. And I want them with students, not sitting in a room testing students. So we we're going to try to get ahead of that. So we'll have we'll have the staff available for that. And we're also going to use some of those funds to, if we're awarded the grant, to do some training so that we could continue to enhance and provide comprehensive evaluations to our our families. I think that is it for me. Any any other questions? Any questions?
I just have a general question with respect to, like, what both you and Paula said, about potential concerns about an influx of students needing some kind of assistant rights, whether it's an I E P or five oh four, or or perhaps, I don't know if you've been seeing some students, the increase in five oh fours converting into students that actually need I E Ps. I think it's typically mutually exclusive, or do you have one that perhaps, particularly now, that you're seeing? You know, you could have a five oh four student that could turn into an I E P.
You really, you you really, you know.
Without naming, yeah, obviously.
It's a really good question. So sometimes when a student is exited from from special education, they may require some accommodations still, although they don't require the specialized instruction that that they would under an I E P. So there are times when a student might be exited from special education and move to a five oh four plan, because let's say they might, they might not need support, for example, in reading or writing, but they may need extra time. So they might be converted to a five oh four plan. And similarly, you may have a student who's getting accommodations on a five oh four plan but continues to struggle. And we go to P P T and we, the student may require some more of that specialized instruction that they're not receiving on the five oh four plan. So it it does occur that sometimes students who are exited from five oh four become special ed and some and vice versa, especially if they become five oh four.
And I guess with the with the DBT training that we have for our staff, as well as the social worker that we're at, I'm hoping that'll alleviate some of the, or at least be able to get ahead of whatever might come our way once all the students are back in the building. But I think to the extent that you've both monitored, I mean, let the board know if there could be any resources. It sounds like there might be. Hopefully, it won't be the case, but if there if there are increased cases with respect to five oh fours or I E Ps, that it sounds like there might be some temporary resources that we have to may have to consider in the future.
You know, if I if I could just chime in, I really want to say that I really appreciate the executive functioning training that we've gone through already. And I have been able to implement some of the strategies working with students who are struggling. And I think the DBT training is really going to give us a skill set that we will be able to help our families and our students to progress. We did put the executive functioning training on the website, if I'm correct, Mike.
We have it recorded, but I don't believe it's posted just yet.
Okay, well, we plan on posting it so that families that were unable to attend could watch it. And I've been mentioning it in a number of my five oh fours with a lot of parent interest. So I just want to give kudos to Mike for bringing all these trainings to the district, because it's really been invaluable from my perspective.
If I could also just chime in, I think it's a great use of our grant money that we receive from the state for professional development and to make some of these funds available for not just our students with special needs, their teachers and their parents, but then the the wonders of Zoom, right? We can open this up to a much wider audience, which we've really seen the benefit. And I think I'd be remiss if I didn't take a moment right now to just thank Mike Di Stefano and Paula Panos. The when we talk about the work and the moving students forward, and a lot of this burden of this year is falling on our special educators and our student support services. I know the board knows, but just to read it into record, Paula Panos is our five oh four coordinator. So all those five oh four meetings that you see doubled, that is squarely on on Paula's plate. And the case manager for all of those five oh fours are our school counselors. So on their workload and their personalization, their ability to reach every student and family that's in need, it just just can't go unnoticed. And when you hear a report as comprehensive as Mr. Di Stefano just presented, it really speaks to all of the staff that that are working and and our support staff, our squad of B Ts and T As and and all of those support specialists that we have working with us. So I thank them all tremendously for helping us shoulder that burden.
Mike, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so so thank you for for that report. I I appreciate all the information. So I I just I just want to better understand and see whether this is accurate or or not, because I think it's important that we send the right message to our students and our our communities. So so my understanding is that we're concerned additional students may be impacted by the effects of the pandemic and may experience increased anxiety-related issues. However, we have done our best to forecast and plan for this potential increase, and we're confident we have the resources to be able to provide services to students that may require additional help. Would that be accurate, or are we saying we're having a lot more kids and we haven't planned for this, and we need to put more money in? I I think it's important that we're kind of very clear and and state this articulate this the best way we can. Does that make sense to you, Mike?
Yeah, that that that's great. And and what I would say is that, you know, and and we appreciate all that the board has done to support us, you know, with the DBT training, with the additional social worker. So that is great that the board in 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 the in the the town has supported us on that. And I think that's that's what we're looking at. We're looking at within with the additional social worker that we're adding on. That's going to alleviate our, as we talked about when we presented the budget, our social worker and our psychologists, our two psychologists are now being pulled to support students in the bridge program. We'll be able to support all students. Our regular education students are five oh four and our special education students. So that will give us, you know, you know, more hands on deck when we bring students back from cohort C that may be experiencing, you know, anxiety around coming back to the school, around returning from the pandemic. Additionally, you know, the 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 parent trainings around anxiety, the parent, the staff trainings around DBT, the funds that I'm hoping the the state approves for us, that that could free our psychologists also again up in our special education teachers to support students. Those are all the things that, you know, I think if we get those all in place, we'll have all hands on deck, and hopefully, we have a nice, smooth transition back to the school year.
Yeah, and I I would just couple that with, I think that the district is doing everything they can to plan for the anticipation of an increase in anxiety and depression. I think we are in a good place. We are, the trainings are very helpful, and the staff is implementing the trainings as soon as we are having them. So to your concern, Mike, I don't think we're all of a sudden going to have a major upheaval. We we are going to see an increase. I think that Mike and I both feel we will see an increase. But I think we are equipped to handle it. And we're we're all hands on deck.
And that that's great. And and again, I I don't, I wasn't concerned. I wanted to make sure that we were relaying the message that we are not concerned. But obviously, we're concerned that additional students may suffer the effects. And we're always, you know, concerned about their health and welfare, but we're very confident that we will have the resources and the abilities to be able to provide students, you know, the services that they may require, if they require them, just that we're we're confident that we are in a good position. Again, best known at information at the time, you know.
It sounds like we are.
I think it's the proactive stance of the board and that the ability for us to do the trainings and to get ahead of it. I I do think we're in a good place. So thank you.
Right, thank you.
I agree.
All right. Any other questions for All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for the report. And thank all the administration for the reports. All right. Moving on then to item seven, Board of Education Committee reports. Any board members? Any committee reports?
On the agenda tonight are the two Title IX policies for first read. I just wanted to preview that a little bit by saying and and Stephanie can perhaps chime in that what we're trying to do is get in compliance. And we do anticipate that those Title IX policies might in fact be re-reviewed by the current administration, since they came out coupled with voluminous regulations that really do some strange things to the concept of Title IX. But we, as a district, really need to get in compliance, so we need to approve those policies. That's item one. Item two is the Policy Committee has been working on, and some board members attended, some overview, sort of ceiling view perspective on good governance. And we had a meeting on the twenty second at which many board members attended, in which we discussed concepts of good governance that would bind how we have tri-board meetings, basically. I would encourage any member who's interested in in how that's proceeding and digging down from the sort of bird's eye, the ceiling view to the bird's eye view, to come to the Policy Committee meetings on Friday mornings at night. And that's my report.
Thank you. Other committee reports, I don't think we had too many. We've been meeting so often, I don't think we've had time to have committee meetings in between.
Did I see a pension committee meeting that was listed yesterday or the other day?
There was nothing to on the agenda for the committee to act on. So in the interest of time, to Todd's point about the many meetings, we canceled the meeting. But but I do need to reach out to Clarence with respect to just getting back on a schedule and just resetting, you know, what the purpose of the pension committee is and that that type of thing. But yeah, Mike, there was really nothing to discuss at this point. So it was canceled.
All right. Seeing no other committee reports, then we will move on to item eight, discussion, possible action. First item, item A, potential change to the proposed Region Nine twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two operating budget. And I'll just start out with some comment, and then I think look for a quick motion to get discussion going around this. And and Mr. Zachary, I'll have you chime in and help us on this one. But let me just give some some quick background. And then, like I said, I'll I'll look for a motion to to in a second, and then we'll have some discussion in more detail. So there is a a technical edit that we need to do to the previously approved Region Nine Board of Education budget that we approved on the sixteenth of March. And that that dollar amount was twenty four million five hundred ninety five thousand two hundred and fifty five dollars with no cents on the end of it. And since that time, we've 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 got a rounding issue that has changed the amounts based on the allocations to the town with a rounding up and a rounding down. down. We are in compliance because our notice that went out for our annual meeting was sent out on the 26th, and it's got a number of $24,595,254. So the noticed amount is different than our actual amount that we approved back on the 16th. And again, it's a rounding error of 10 cents on the eastern side and and 99 cents on the reading side and a rounding up, rounding down. If you add the two numbers that we approved and didn't get us to the 255. So we need to make a correction here as a board to approve the 24,595,254. So we're in sync. So again, it's a technical issue that we're looking to correct. And I'll again, look for a motion around the 24,595,254 to that number, we can second it, and then we'll open into discussion and get into more about the the technical edit and so forth. So I'll look for a motion from a board member around the 24,595,254 as the budget for Region Nine for the 2022 year.
So I'll move, Doug.
All right. Thank you, Maureen. And a second? All right. Thank you. All right. So we'll open it for discussion, any more details around why the technical edit occurred, how we need to fix it.
If we approved the budget of 24,595,255, how is there a rounding error? And and did the towns make the, because obviously, we didn't make a rounding error, although when I went back and looked at it, the the two amounts that we put in our presentation for the one for Easton and the one for Reading, when you add them together, they total 24,595,254. But our number said 24,595,255. So did we report the wrong number to the towns? Did the towns create a rounding error that occurred? Was it on our end? Was it on their end? And what kind of oversight or have we put into place that we don't run into this again? Because it's it's somewhat embarrassing and kind of awkward that here we are, you know, five, six days away from the referendum, and we're trying to make numbers align that are, some are posted that, you know.
I think we're talking about a dollar, right? So.
You're actually talking about 90 cents. So Mike, to tell you what happened, when you applied the the allocations, the Reading number, whole dollar number ended in four, there was and 90 cents, and the Eastern number ended in zero and and 10 cents. So when it was presented to the towns, it was given to the dollar, the to the cents decimal. But when then one of the Reading meetings, so Mike, to answer your question, it's like all parties involved had some some responsibility as me, the board. So the board made this presentation, it rounded off its numbers to 254 and 220. They didn't do the cents, but the top said 255. So when they had the Reading meeting and they asked for confirmation, because the the Reading finance director had the number I gave him, which had the cents involved, they asked me to confirm. I went and pulled out our presentation. Our presentation had about the cents. So I confirmed the number that was in our presentation, which which removed the 90 cents. So you're really, you're essentially telling you're off by 90 cents. To your point, when you add the two allocation numbers together, you come up with a different number than the top. So what we're trying to do, since the towns have already approved the amounts, is address that 90 cents by reducing the overall budget by $1.
And so moving forward, we're not going to have this issue recur because?
Because and moving forward, when you do allocations, we're gonna, I'm gonna ask you guys to round up to whole dollars before we go anywhere.
Well, didn't we round up to whole dollars in the beginning?
No, you didn't.
No, Mike, we didn't. We missed the presentation when we approved it. You can look at the presentation. It's an oversight. So I think in the interest of moving forward, there's, there's a lot of people are to blame. And I think we put the controls in place, and I think we should just move forward.
Yeah, and we should go to the cents, two digits past the decimal going forward.
Yeah, like for instance, in in Eastern, we went to 43 cents on our final budget. So you either eliminate the the pennies and the cents, or you you take it all the way out to the full dollar amount. It's your call what you want to do, but you can't sort of live in both worlds.
I think we round up and call it a day.
Problem solved.
Right. And and again, the the notices that have been published. Yeah, they are, they are, they are at the 254, which is again, based on the allocations to the town, based on the student population, just for the public. So we are in compliance with statutes of posting and making all our meetings, and we don't have to change any of those things. But we do need to change what the board has approved of a budget.
So should we just need to vote on that now?
We need to vote on that now. Yes. So if if no other discussion on it, we have the motion to adjust the budget to reapprove it at 24,595,254. That's been moved and seconded. So no other further discussion. Is that a discussion? Or are you voting, Mike?
No, I thought we were voting.
Okay, you're just getting ahead of it. All right. All in favor, say aye, and raise your hand. All right. Looks like it's unanimous. So that passes.
You all's time was worth more than 90 cents.
Thank you.
Yes. And we'll look for it for next year, right? We'll figure out a better way of rounding up and down or going to.
Typically, you don't have allocations, but since you have allocations, it just sort of, no one was thinking about 90 cents and 10 cents. But, you know, we lived and learned.
Yep. All right. Then we'll move on to item B, under discussion possible action, updates on student vaccinations, prom, loser graduation and awards ceremony. And I'll hand that over to you, and you should be able to share.
That's me. And so I'm going to share my screen. And what I did was just made a larger copy of of some materials that came in your packet, just so I can address these five areas. And then I'll be glad to go back and take any questions that you might have. All of this information will be posted on the website. So we're going to start with student vaccinations. And and this is just a big thank you to Amy Taylor. She is not just one of our coaches and not just one of our parents, but she's also the vice president of CHC. And she contacted us quite a while ago to see if this was before April vacation, if we would be interested in having hours set aside at the Danbury Mall. This is a CHC mass vaccination center. And so the dates that were chosen were April 24th and April 25th, just this past weekend. The second dose then occurs May 14th and 15th. This is the Pfizer vaccine, which is a vaccine that has been approved for ages 16 and older. We don't keep track of the students who have participated in the families. What we did was just publicize that there were appointments available during this time for our Barlow students and and anyone 16 and up in in their families. If you look at that letter F there, the seniors had the first option to sign up. And then that was then open to any student at Barlow ages 16 years of age or older. And then on Wednesday, any students or family members of employees or residents of Easton and Reading community were invited to fill in those spaces. And links were sent to families and students via listserv and via email. I don't have the final number of the students and the how many vaccine appointments we kept in the 24th and 25th. When I last checked in with Ms. Taylor, it was, we were about 300, which is wonderful. I can tell you by the students who came to school yesterday with sore arms and slight headaches, and they were appreciative of being able to take advantage of that Pfizer vaccine. On the, Todd, do you want me to stop at each one? Or do you, what is, what is your pleasure, Mr. Todd?
Yeah, we can, we can, why don't we stop and just quickly for questions? We'll try to moderate it, because I know it's starting to get later. But so any questions on that?
Questions on vaccines.
All right. I, you know, as a parent, I had a, one of my students go through, and it was a very well-run, very efficient program that they they did there with the Coast Guard and everybody getting them through.
CHC has been wonderful, and that is quite an operation. If you haven't gone by the Danbury Mall to to see that work. So I am going to go back and share that's vaccines. The second is prom. And our prom, as you heard Max report, it is going to take place on Friday, May 21st. There's been a prom committee, and it's made up of our students, our class advisors, administrators, and parents. Really have to give a shout out to Julie McTagg, who has, she is the assistant principal for the senior class, and she also coordinates a lot of our activities and works with many student groups. And I thank her for for this incredible endeavor in taking on many of these activities, but prom in particular. So the venue the students chose was Michael's at the Grove. It's in Bethel. There will be dinner, there'll be dancing, there'll be pictures, and there'll be a PTSA raffle. If you are familiar with our events in the past, we normally have a senior banquet that the PTSA donates incredible prizes for students, gift baskets, baskets and gift cards. And students come into the event and they get to do kind of like a silent auction for the or a silent raffle with their tickets. So I really appreciate that. We did this virtually last year, and it was fun, but it's going to be so much nicer to have this event in person. We are limiting the event to 200 people, and that's the venue and and also our guidelines at this time. That 200 includes chaperones and waitstaff, so we know we can accommodate our seniors. This has been, I appreciate the students who have reached out, who are dating juniors or dating students outside of Barlow. We, we, the the prom committee made the decision to just have one prom instead of having a prom with different sessions. They they thought about this. These are such hard decisions to make in our pandemic. It's wonderful to have things back to normal. We are more normal. It's wonderful to to take these steps forward and be having a prom to begin with. I don't know, in the beginning of this year, that we would have been so hopeful that we were going to have a live prom for our students. So it is seniors only, and that's the the give and take in in this. Many of the districts in our area are senior only proms, or they're having proms with sessions. They're having two different proms. So we are only having one on Friday, May 21st with our seniors. We are having only passenger cars come to and from prom. Again, this is in keeping with guidelines that were came out from the state on April 9th. It's it's titled interim considerations for end of the year school events. And it speaks to the fact that even though we are getting closer to normal, we're not there yet. We don't want to fumble on the five yard line. We want to keep our students safe. When you read through these guidelines from from the state, it still talks about masking, it still talks about combining events when we can, looking at at opportunities to maybe adjust activities so that students are are safer. And we're doing our best to continue to be vigilant. We always have a traditional staff receiving line outside of our proms. It's very much a Barlow tradition. We'll be able to have that receiving line, but we'll have to set it up a little differently. We'll probably be in the parking lot. We normally shake hands and we talk to the kids, and it's going to be more of a stand back and and look at their wonderful outfits and and just have that great conversation with them as they go into the event. The banquet does have space inside the banquet space, I'm sorry, has windows that open, kind of totally open so that it allows the air to go through. It's not a hotel, an inside hotel area. And that is a big reason why this space was chosen. There are some grounds on this space also that we're excited to be able to have the students go and take pictures. And they actually set up a bank, a drop, a backdrop. They have weddings at this venue. And so we're, we're happy about that. The advisors are going this weekend. New Fairfield is having their prom at Michael's at the Grove. And so the the staff at Michael's at the Grove invited our advisors to come and take a look at the way the tables are set up and the way dinner is going to be served. And so we're still finalizing those plans. When we have that final plan, we'll go back to our Reading and Easton Departments of Health and make sure that we're all in alignment in what they, those details are. And ticket sales begin this week, and we are excited to be having a prom. And that is the prom piece. Questions?
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Um, so again, thank you for for everyone for their work and organizing this. I just want to make sure here, we're, we're saying we're limiting it to 200 people, which includes chaperones and waitstaff. I don't know how many chaperones we're talking and how many waitstaff. And it really is is not important. What's what's important to me is that every senior will have the opportunity to attend. We're not saying that there's going to be some seniors that are not going to be able to attend, because we're going to go over that 200 limit with the staff and the chaperones. I just want to be confident that that's the message. It's not first come, first served. And if you don't sign up by this date, you you don't get in. Every senior will have the opportunity to attend the prom. Is that correct?
So there were 214 seniors. And if all 214 seniors want to come to the prom, it will be the first in our in our Barlow history. But all 214 students will come to the prom.
Right.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, let me move on.
Palooza.
Palooza. Oh, we are so excited about this. So Palooza is going to take place, and many of you and many in our community have attended Palooza. It will be modified. So it is going to take place on the the night it was intended, which is Thursday, May 27. We are going to have a modified in-person program. And what this will look like is we we thought this was an important opportunity for our students. For those of you, let me back up and explain what Palooza is, if you're not familiar with Palooza. We call this a our celebration of learning. So we have students that work on a project. Some have been working on this all year long. Some, it's just a second semester activity. Mr. Tim Hummelski is the Palooza advisor, and he meets with the students, guiding them on how to form questions and inquiry and research, and how to take that new learning and present it to an authentic audience. Last year, it was disappointing, because of course, we were not in person. The students recorded themselves. It was a nice experience, but it lacked that authenticity of students performing to an audience of some of their peers, some of their teachers, and some community members that they may never have met before. So this year, we are pleased that we'll be able to have an audience of invited guests. So this isn't going to be the come to Barlow on May 27th and wander around and drop in wherever you'd like to. It will be a little bit more controlled than that. We'll have students assigned to classrooms. We're thinking right now, it will be two student presenters per classroom in these two sessions that you see here, one from five to six and one 6:30 to 7:30. We are working with Nancy Doniger and our community asset network, and that is CAN, affectionately known as CAN. It uses volunteers from our community to provide that that mentorship, that audience, that feedback for students. So we will invite community assets to come in, and they will be assigned to a room. They'll be given a rubric so they can give feedback. They don't do the grading for the students, but they give that authentic lens. And we, this is something we started two years ago. So when we were last in person at Palooza. And what a wonderful dimension that their presence added to these students' presentations. So we will have all of our guests will be signing a waiver. When you see that waiver, it basically is the sign off sheet that we've asked visitors to sign over the summer when they can. when they came in, questions like, I'm feeling well. And in the past, it was a travel. They haven't been out of the state. I don't think that's going to be a concern right now with the travel bans lifted. And they'll move to their assigned presentation. So there's not going to be a lot of movement in hallways. We are going to have our science research students. So this is different from our students who have worked on their capstone project. But our science research students have put together a poster presentation. We'll set those students up probably in the upper gym at this point. And in between those two Palooza sessions, the community assets, the parents, whatever student guests we might have in attendance can walk through and get an experience of, of the incredible research our students have, have done. We're still finalizing details. We will have an abbreviated art show. Our students did not submit artwork in the first semester, but we do have incredible projects now that are coming in. And so we'll have an abbreviated art show for that as well. Let me stop this share and also state that we always invite board members to Palooza. So if you would like to come to Palooza, please respond to an invitation that you'll be getting by email. And we will have different projects and you could pick what room you'd like to be at. And we'd love to have your voice as well that evening if you would like to attend. Questions on Palooza?
So my question was going to be whether the board would be in attendance. And I always enjoy going, but my question again, related to your modified in-person. I don't want to be there that prevents a parent from being there to see the, you know, their, their, the successes of their child. So again, if you can just kind of assure us that, you know, obviously we're not going to have a crowded hallways going back and forth to, you know, I mean, some years we've really had a large crowd there. And the, you know, the hot dog wagon is out in front and every, everything, you know, I, I know it's modified, but just assure board members that our presence there is not going to prevent parents and that we're encouraged to go rather than we could go if we want to, if that makes sense.
Makes perfect sense. So yes, there is no weenie Lynn hot dog truck, unfortunately. So eat before you come. We will, we're finding venues, these rooms, Mike, that will be large enough to hold the student, the, the two student presenters, their parents. We're asking students what guests who they would like to come to those meetings. And then we'll work with the community assets administration in-person people. There'll be room for you to come and we, and we do hope because we don't get enough opportunity to display the incredible work and research that our students are doing. So it is my hope that, that you can join us and we will make sure you're not taking the space of, of a grandmother or parent or someone else who needs to be there. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right.
Okay, I think I have two more.
Yep, graduation and awards.
Graduation and awards. We're gonna, we're gonna finish big and do the graduation last. So let me talk to you right now about our awards. So this is interesting. Again, all new ground for us and we just, I appreciated the comments earlier about resiliency. And I really believe when you know, the board knows my doctoral work was all on resiliency. So I can tell you that resiliency is a skill that can be taught and we are trying to model it for our students. And we just try to take advantage of the, the oddness of this year. So we have award ceremonies. They are going to be all virtual. We will have a live broadcast. Some pieces may be recorded in the award ceremony where we haven't quite determined that. But the first one I will bring your attention to is the Legacy Society. And that's going to happen on Wednesday, May 26th. We have a keynote speaker and we always, I guess, maybe, maybe when I stepped into the role here as, as head of school, we decided to find a keynote speaker who was a Barlow graduate. And in this case, this year, it's going to be one of our English teachers, Ms. Maeve Smith. And she will be our keynote speaker. Last year we were not able to have a virtual ceremony. And so we will be inviting our students who were then juniors, who are now seniors to come to this ceremony in the Legacy Society. Students' names will be read aloud and they will receive cords and pins. If they're seniors, they will wear those cords and pins at our commencement ceremony. So we're excited to, to have that event be able to take place. And then we have our awards night. And if you recall, last year we did not have any awards night. I think we published a, a program that said what students won the award. We tried to incorporate the awards into our senior graduation presentation, that PowerPoint that went along with that. This year we will have an awards night on Thursday, June 3rd. It will be virtual. We will have the students' names read aloud with the descriptions of their awards. We'll have a written program that will detail the award and the recognition recipients. I just had a conversation as early as this afternoon with Mr. Brown. He coordinates our, the scholarship, the town scholarship program. And we were talking about maybe we could take advantage of this virtual webinar format and have different presenters that coordinate, like Mr. Brown, like the Alumni Association, that coordinate large awards. And maybe as part of this presentation, they can speak for a few minutes about their award. It's not something that we're normally able to do when we're in person because the ceremony goes on so long. So to have people come to the mic could be problematic. But we'll do our best to personalize the ceremony, to give some, some kudos to the incredible generosity of our community who come forward to donate to the scholarship programs, sometimes in the names of loved ones, other times just a donation to, to students in need. And so we are excited about that and to recognize our students. These students are primarily seniors and juniors, but there's some sophomores and underclassmen who, who are recognized as well. With the actual awards, the book awards, the, the financial awards, we will find a way to give those awards out to students. Our, our initial thought is maybe during advisory on June 9th. The other piece is when we do have our graduation rehearsals, it's nice when students come up and we hand them something. And so we normally come up with a, a bag or a goodie. Sometimes it's their report card. And maybe that's another opportunity that we can actually put the awards in the hands of the students. Those are our award ceremony. I don't think Max mentioned that tomorrow is our induction into the TRI-M Music Award Honor Society. And with a lot of those smaller groups of people, we can actually do that live and do that safely. And so we'll be having that induction in person tomorrow. Those are our award ceremonies. Questions?
Graduation.
I got one more. Okay. So now we are, I feel like there should be some kind of drum roll. Now we are on graduation. So we are still working the details of graduation, but let me share with you what we have at this particular moment. So we have a date. The board helped us pick that date on June 16th, which is the last day of classes for students. We're looking right now at 6:00 PM with seating open at 5:00. Those times may change a little bit. What we're trying to achieve here is because the venue is the stadium at the school, we need to pick a time that isn't high noon because that turf field gets awfully warm. We also know that if you're sitting in the stands, looking at the field, so you're sitting in the home stands by the press box, the sun can be right in your eyes. So we don't have to wait for the sun to go down totally because we have beautiful trees that surround the stadium. But we need to see at what time does the sun begin to set behind those trees. It not only cools off the field significantly, but it will make it more comfortable for our guests who will be seated in the bleachers. So who are those guests? Right now we're looking at two guests per graduate. That would be if we have 214 graduates, we would have 428 guests. And they would be spaced from each other, of course, sitting with each other, but away from the other pair on the home side bleachers. And we think we can accommodate that. If the spacing requirements change and if we are able to, perhaps we're looking into maybe more seating on the field itself. So the way you can envision this is we would have a stage setup, would be a little closer to the stands than right in midfield because I think it will be easier for, for some people to, to see from the stands and identify their students. There will be space on the turf for our graduates. For our staff members who would like to attend graduation, we're hoping that we get a great turnout. I think it means so much to our students when their teachers are able to show up and be there in, in their gowns. We'll have a stage. It will be a little smaller than we are used to. So we will have some side of the stage seating for people that are normally on the stage. And we'll work out those details and, and let you know what that seating will look like. Our maximum bleacher capacity. So if we didn't have to space anyone out, we're looking at 800 people can sit in the bleachers. So if we don't have to space it out, we can have more seats per graduate. There's a visitor side bleachers and you have about 600 spaces, again with no, no spacing out. I'm not sure if we want to fill both sides. So we need to see what the guidelines are. Do we have to keep people apart if they are outside? We know the, the mask guidelines for outside have been lifted, except if you're in a crowded area. So we imagine that everyone will still be masked because if they, they talked about, you know, being at a farmer's market or a concert, that you, we would stay masked. So we, we still see that happening. And we will finalize the plans when we get closer to graduation. But we are looking at a very traditional commencement ceremony where our students are the, the emcees of the event and the student speakers will, will come forward. And it will be bittersweet for me as my last graduation at Barlow, but I'm so excited to be doing this in person, even if we are masked and outside and doing the weather dance so that we don't have rain. Our rain date will be the next day, probably earlier in the morning than waiting in the afternoon. And we might have better luck earlier in the morning if we have to go to that rain date. That is our graduation ceremony. Any questions I can ask, answer?
Sure, go ahead.
Is this more, is it very similar? It sounds like it's almost similar to the 2019 graduation, right? Except it's at the stadium.
Except it's in the stadium. Yes.
Yeah. So again, from my notes from the last meeting, we were looking into some sort of a carpet to protect the field. I, I don't know if you have an update on, on that or whether it's needed. Cause I had thought maybe we were putting chairs or something on the field. And, and now it looks like we're using the bleachers or maybe both. So if you could detail, you know, the cost of the carpet, whether we got one loan to us or, or how that works. And then the other question would be, and I'm sure, you know, you, you'll work this out, some sort of a contingency plan. But if you can put 800 spectators in the bleachers with no spacing, I find it almost impossible to believe that the guidelines will be that you can put 800 people in the bleachers in June. You know, at, at a minimum, you're gonna, you know, like sports stadiums are 25 or 40% capacities. The most I've seen, you are outside, so that helps a little bit. But just making sure that if we're publicizing two guests per student, that no matter what the spacing is, we're going to be able to accommodate those two guests per student. Because I, I think it's important that if, if we're uncertain at this point, maybe we should hedge and say that's what we're shooting for, but we, we really don't know at this point. Or maybe we are confident that we can put them in, but if you could speak to that and the carpet, that would be helpful.
Sure. So perhaps in May I can share with the board a, a more detailed breakdown of the cost because we're still investigating the stage rentals. Right now it looks like the staging is not going to need a, a carpet under it because of the way the, the staging kind of is on a, it's on a board or what we're looking at, right? So it's a flat. It's not pegs in the ground. It's actually on a platform. So we'll get more details when that, we haven't rented the staging yet. Likewise, there were chairs that we could get that have a, a bar across as opposed to the feet in the ground. And we think that would be okay. So we have Walter and Mike Santangeli are working to look at some of these seat requirements that we have. We have two sets of bleachers that are portable bleachers that we know we can move in and use for seating if we needed to keep people even more spaced or we needed some, some outside seating. So it's still a revolving work in progress. We are at this time, that's our favorite word. At this time, we are moving forward with, with this idea that we'll be able to accommodate two guests per graduate. And, and we could do that in multiple ways. So I can't share too many more details with, with you because we don't have the stage rented. We have some pricing and we're doing some configuration in what that might look like in the, in the stands.
And then that configuration, the students are sitting down on the field.
They're on the field.
So not in the bleachers.
Not in the bleachers, not taking up any of those seats. In, on the field in chairs or on the field in portable bleachers is yet to be seen. We're hoping they're going to be on the field in chairs and that we could space those chairs slightly away from each other. So there'll be a little bit more room on the field itself.
And, and I know there's a budget in, in place already for this. But again, if, if by May or May meeting or before that, if there are additional items or you need additional outreach to the community or for the board to help with any funding or items, locating items, locating people to provide services similar to what we did last year. We're always happy to help. So do let us know.
I really do appreciate that. I think we may need more hands on deck and, and more volunteers to help even just moving people through from driving carts down and golf carts. It's very limited parking. We anticipate the graduates will walk down the path. So we do have some student interest in decorating the path for the seniors. And so that's exciting for us. And then they will enter the stadium by the ticket booth. But we'll have the guests enter through the, the main gate and be seated that way. So I will, I will let you know, there are some expenses that we incur when we're at the O'Neill Center that we are not going to have to incur. So for example, we rent a truck so we can move all of the equipment from the school to the O'Neill Center. We won't need to do that. This is all going to be on our campus. Some things that we, that we do want to make sure we are, I, we're exploring. I don't know if we can do it. Can we have a musical number? Does it need to be pre-recorded? But I, we will look into all of those expenses. Karen Bender, if I could do another shout out for, for thank yous. Karen is our administrative assistant that's in charge of student activities. She's so organized and so thoughtful and she has dug up all the plans way back when, when Barlow used to have graduations on campus. And we looked at these drawings of where the stage was and how the people came in. It's been so helpful. So she is wonderful in keeping us on track. I believe we might even have a graduation meeting tomorrow. And we've been having them pretty regularly to make these decisions about staging, about seating. And we're in a little bit of a hold pattern. And we're in a little bit of a hold pattern, waiting for the governor to release some more guidelines and our Department of Health to weigh in.
Any other questions from board members? So we may, again, in in May at our meeting there, put on agenda for an update. Or again, if there's anything that comes up between now and then, feel free to reach out to me as board council board members. We're all, we're all very interested in helping out and making sure it's successful.
Thank you, I will.
All right. And I think that is all the items. I gave you a long list. I appreciate you going through all those. So thank you, it was a great update. Lots going on again, so that's great. All right, a- anything else? In that or any other questions? Board members, we'll move on. All right, so let's move on then to item C. Recommendations from Superintendent for non-renewals. And Dr. Harrison, I don't know if you need me to share anything or if you share, you'll just read your statement.
Sure, I could just read my statement, give me one second. So essentially, I'm recommending to the board that we non-renew the following teachers in 32 to reduction in force. That would be Megan Lane, Maria Sherna, Brianna and Brianna Williams. These individuals have already been notified in writing that I was going to be making this recommendation tonight. These three were hired as long-term substitutes for the current school year. The teachers who they are covering for are expected to return at the start of next school year. It is important to note, just for the for the public, that the recommendations for non-renewals have nothing to do with performance, but it's a just a matter of reduction.
And I believe we need a motion for this or is, Mike, I was just saying, you keep me honest on on process here. I don't know if it's just a notification, I think we do need a motion, I believe.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna wing this, but but I'm gonna tell you, normally, this is a pre-written out motion because this has to be done the right way. This is a legal thing. But I I'm gonna take a shot at it and say, move to accept the superintendent's recommendation for non-renewals for, and if Dr. Harrison, you could give me the names again.
Yes, Mike, I actually have this written out. So Todd, if you'll let me, Vicky sent it to us today. If you'll let me share my screen, I could just put it on the screen.
That would be helpful because yes, it should, it needs to be done correctly.
All right, you should be a host now and should be able to share it, Dr. Harrison. All right.
Okay, so I'll move that the Region 9 Board of Education be determine that the contract of employment for the following teachers will be terminated effective June 30, 2021 due to reduction in force. Megan Lane, Maria Shuma, Shuna and Brianna Williams, apologies for the names. The Superintendent of Schools is directed to advise such persons in writing of this action. And it's worded a little differently, but I'm going to base the assumption that the Human Resource Manager has done this in compliance with the statute, which we we have to be compliant with how we make that motion. But I'll make the motion as written.
All right, thank you, do I have a second? And you'll have to be verbal because I've lost, I gotta adjust my.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All right, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, then all the question, all in favor of the motion? I'm all closed. All right, so I get some answers as well, motion carries. Okay, we'll move on then to item D, policies for first readings. And Maureen, I don't know if you're, you're gonna bring those up, you teed them up earlier or if someone else is going to?
I did not tee them up, Scott.
They were in the board packet.
Yes, yeah, if there's any further comments on, we have two policies, I guess, that we need to bring up for first reading. It, I'll go ahead there, 4118 dot one, sex discrimination, harassment in workplace title nine and policy 5145 dot four four, sex discrimination, harassment in workplace title nine. I don't know if there's any other discussions around these.
Well, so.
That we need to do them and to be in compliance. And and I have some reasonable expectation that these regulations that gave rise to these policies in the Code of Federal Regulations came out shortly before the November election. And I would anticipate that there will be some new CFR changes that will change these policies again, but we need to be in compliance. So we don't really have a choice in terms of the wording or the language or much that's contained in them.
And these are all in the board members packets, so you do have the.
Right, so even if the board were to go through this for sort of technical edits, there's not much you can change substantively. In fact, there's next to nothing.
Okay, and that that helps, I appreciate that. But again, my concern relates to previous concerns, which is that these policies have either been approved and worded by CADE or they've come from Shipman and Goodwin or at the very least, Shipman and Goodwin has reviewed these policies. I just.
All of the above.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the policies are, again.
We absolutely did not write them. We absolutely did not author any portion of them. We were just in a position where we had to approve them.
Right, but so, but they've been reviewed by Shipman and Goodwin or they came from CADE, one of the two. Right?
Yes.
Okay, so I think that's important, just so that we're.
Oftentimes, you get policies here that we have been or had the ability to manage or change slightly to fit the needs of the district. This is not that case.
Yes, I would be concerned if we were doing that in this.
Not in any way.
Yeah, okay, that's great.
So so these are on first reading and then we'll have second reading at the next meeting? Or is there a timeline on these?
As soon as possible is the timeline. If we could do it before, that would be wonderful. If it waits till the next meeting, I think given, I think that would be okay.
I think policy says it's got to be at a regular meeting and then the next.
And we did have that discussion about whether or not, and in some circumstances, you could amend that. But I think you're probably right, Mike.
Maureen, I had a question, they they mentioned reading, right? So is that, is this is, this applies to all three districts?
Everybody.
Okay, so then from a regular meeting standpoint, is this something, I don't, actually, I think our meeting is before the tri-board meeting, right? So from an agenda standpoint, it doesn't matter which one, right? As long as it's a, it's a properly noted standing meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, and anything else, I write no motions on this, I think it's, on first reading, everybody needs to read them and move to second reading at the next regular meeting. Okay, all right, then that concludes all the items for discussion, possible action under agenda. Item eight, we'll move on to agenda item nine.
We have to vote on moving it to.
Oh, sorry. So I was moving right along.
I'm sorry. You'll end up doing it again, so.
Yeah, I don't know, let's do it, we don't have to go back. All right, sorry, so we, we could probably put both of them together in the motion or.
Fine, I think.
All right, so I'll look for a motion then for the two policies on first reading, 4118 dot one and 5145 dot four four. All right, Maureen.
Second, Karen.
Second, Karen. All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor? I, good, passes unanimously. All right, now I'm going to move off of discussion into public comment, item number nine. We do still have a few minute, few members of the public, it looks like. So again, ask if you would like to speak, raise your hand or use the little hand symbol. If you could announce yourself, name, address before you start on your comments. Limit your comments to two minutes and two items on our agenda, that would be appreciated. So if you would like to speak, if you go ahead and raise your hand now. I see Dana. Dana, go ahead. About two minutes and again, name, name and address again.
Dana Benson, 34 Pond Road East and Dana Benson, 34 Pond Road East. So I would just ask the gentleman who presents the budgetary numbers in the spreadsheets, is that, I think, Mr. Zachary. The next time that he shares his screen, if it's possible, I don't know if this is possible, to set in Excel the, so that the the headings, as you scroll up and down the budget items, you know, because you have a long spreadsheet. If you could somehow set the column headings so that they they continue down as you move down the spreadsheet, you know, to to sell number 300 and back up to sell 100, that would be really helpful because, you know, as a member of the public, it's, I forget what, you know, you've got five columns. I forget whether we're talking about projected or actual and I lose track and it would be really, it it's wonderful detail. But if you, I just would ask next time that you share screen, if it is possible to set the column headings so they travel up and down as you move up and down the spreadsheet, that would be very helpful for us trying to follow along. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other member of the public for comment? All right, seeing none, then we'll move on to item 10, board member comment. Any members of the board left to comment? So Cheryl, Cheryl, go ahead.
I just want to thank the the staff and the board and everybody, all the parents, community, family for trying to restore some of the pre-pandemic activities in the safest way we can. So it's very, very nice to see as, and as a parent of a senior, thank you, those senior events, very well planned, very well communicated. Look forward to hearing both of them. So do want to thank everybody and again, for balancing safety with normal, so thank you.
Thank you. Mike, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just, I, my board member comment is is in the form of a question. I'm wondering.
I don't know if that's technically a comment then.
Well, it is a comment, it's just in the form of a question. And it's, are there any committee assignments that we're looking to do at this time?
Are you asking me?
I just put it out there, I can't ask the chair. I'm putting it out there in the, in, you know, knowing that time is of the, I just, it was the question. It would be the time to do it, so I just question.
None at this time.
Okay.
I appreciate your question, but I have no committee assignments at this time.
Okay.
All right, any other board member comment? All right, seeing none, then I'll look for a motion to adjourn, item number 11.
So move.
All right.
Second, Cheryl.
Second, Cheryl, thank you. So we know conversation on this, all in favor? Aye. Again, and we are adjourned at 10:01 PM. All right, thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Bye, good night. Todd, can I just ask you, there's no notes from 6:30?